We're on the air. We're on the air.
For sun and the body just glowing over feet.
Tape is on. Tape is on.
Well, we're all right.
Never mind.
I'll go look at your creepy guy.
Just let me know. Okay, yeah, just let me know. All right. The invocation will be by Oliver tonight. We're gonna have a moment of silence for the people that were gunned down out of the Far West.
I still don't know why he did it. Do they know why?
He's a nut.
But, I mean, was there something in his mind?
He was bullied, secondhand smoke, eating too much butter, watching too much MTV. Take your pick. Under spe- I don't care. Under special business.
And he probably got a trophy for just participating.
Do we do the Century Center convey that tonight?
Sure.
Then we have our appointments. Our Andrew- or Dr. Dave, Andrew Neimeth. Greg Downs is taking over for Randy Kelly and-
Are you talking about Century Center?
Andrew Neimeth.
I support Dr. Dave and Greg.
Okay, there we go.
Two different spots. I support Dr. Dave for the redevelopment commission and-
Redevelopment is going to be- Greg Downs is taking over for Randy Kelly.
Yeah.
And everybody else is the same, nobody else put in for it.
Did Pumpkin put in for transport yet?
We want to make the announcement that we have many citizens who are-
But I didn't know if he sure.
Yeah, we're gonna do a press release. That's a rule of the committee members' honor and then to apply.
Eighty-five, ten. Personnel finance is favorable.
Are your committee members the same?
Yeah, absolutely. Eighty-six, ten. As a substitute.
To February twenty-eighth. As a personnel finance. February fourteenth is what it is. I was twenty-eight.
Two-fourteen?
Two-fourteen.
It's two-fourteen?
No, eighty-six isn't.
No, eighty-six was not sub.
That's a CED.
No, I'm at eighty-seven.
I'm at eighty-six.
Eighty-six is February fourteenth.
Oh, that's right.
That's continued, okay. Eighty-seven is a sub, and that's also continued.
To February the twenty-eighth, right?
February twenty-eighth.
It's eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight is favorable out of personnel finance. And we have eighty-nine, ten is a substitute, and that's going to be no recommendation. But I think if everybody just confirms their thing, we can vote and be out of here quickly.
Dr. Dave, what do we need to get your support on it? What do you think?
I think that ramming snowfall is something that happens. If you're going to have a period whereby you're going to cite people, there needs to be notice. Like you have post-speed limits. Okay, just say when it's snow- What happens when I plow my- or I clean my driveway, but then the state trucks come through and close it up? Do I have to do it two times or three times in twenty-four hours? Is that what you're saying? Or is there gonna be a special exemption granted? I think that, you know, I think the mayor-
We're gonna start, then we're gonna work the kinks as we go along.
I think the mayor should declare a state of emergency effective now. If your stop- walk's unclear in twenty-four hours, then we will start ticketing. But just have this random ballot over people's head that, you know, we could show up any time and ticket you if you happen to miss the exact measurement of snowfall. I think is well-intended, but-
But we can now.
So let's make it a more complicated thing we can enforce. If you have notice, it's enforceable.
I disagree with it being more complicated. I think it clarifies many of the issues, particularly the whole of fire.
Actually, it makes it more complicated because it tries to clarify, but doesn't do it.
But it just doesn't clarify where you want it to clarify.
But that's what lawyers do, argue about this stuff.
So you would like to see something in effect of, hey, we have a sidewalk snow cleanup.
I think the mayor should declare a snow ordinance whereby we will, at the end of- if you aren't cleared at the end of twenty-four hours. Because people- sometimes people can't get to things in twenty-four hours.
Well, no, there's- if you're gonna- you're gonna have to go for some type of measurement because on the north side of town, we got almost four feet. And then I drove to the east side of town, and they only got two feet. So from one side to the south on the other, it's different.
It does vary from, I mean, over one foot.
I mean, I just, you know, I understand. I think it's well-intentioned.
We're gonna work on it as we go along.
The twenty-four hours though is already on the books.
So that's not really enforceable. We just acknowledge it.
So it's eight to one. Don't worry about it, buddy.
It's randomly enforceable. It's arbitrary and comprehensive.
I think it'll pull together the priorities of the city as far as those public safety areas for schools and everything else that are not being addressed right now.
Right.
That's what our-
I'm particularly worried about Pearlie because it's right there on Eddie, and I see kids walking in the street all the time.
Kids walking the street where there's no snow. That doesn't make a difference.
I like that church that's on Camp House.
All righty then. So let's go into resolutions. We have eleven-one is confirming. Confirming. Eleven-two.
CED favorable.
CED favorable. And then we go to first reading. It's one-eleven goes to area plan.
Eleven-one.
One-eleven. Two-eleven and three-eleven also the area plan.
We make that motion together?
No.
No, separate.
Just after mid-run, so.
Four-eleven is park for one-twenty-four. Five-eleven is park for one-twenty-four. Under unfinished business, for bill sixty-eight-ten goes to Z and A for the twenty-fourth, one-twenty-four. And seventy-ten is continued.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Is this the housing?
Res zoning on Kenmore?
The Housing Authority gave you a letting that you have it in your- to Kenmore.
I got it unfavorable for Mary.
That's a big, big move.
No, they got no recommendation. And then-
It was a no rec- no rec-
Oh, no rec- okay.
For the request to withdraw bill fifty-five-ten. And the last one. And what's- what's the confirming resolutions?
Yeah, I would like to raise a point of order that we have two bills that are related to the McCormick tax abatement so that it can be properly advertised. We'll do a confirming at the twenty-fourth. Because all the information that Councilmember Ross requested is now in.
So you'll clarify it?
Yep.
Is door locked, man?
The massage parlor annexation and stuff? Yes. Annexation, rezoning, all that stuff.
Hey, John, you wanna check that door and make sure it's locked?
Yeah, we got the annex-
What's the name?
The massage parlor.
Twenty-three. It's bad?
Last meeting, it was on where you said for the tenth, but they requested it go to the twenty-fourth. So there may be people out there that are looking for that.
So we need to tell them up front.
Yeah, you might wanna tell them up front. Maple Lane and-
Oh, I've already done that.
You did it? Just in case the way that it's out there.
What's the ordinance number? Seventy-three?
There's three, there's three different bill numbers. I only have Maple Lane and where's it at?
That's all right.
Maple Lane and twenty-three, the massage parlor.
Maple Lane, twenty-three rezoning. That's sort of go on.
Ask out the ears.
What it will be on what, on the agenda?
One-twenty-four.
Thank you.
You want me to go get the bill?
No, that's fine. Oh, ten-five-nine-four-six-ten and ten-fifty-seven.
There you go.
Wow, look at that. No, I accidentally got tucked in with my snow.
That's like the snow.
But the official stuff.
You thought it was supposed to be on today too, didn't you?
Yeah, that was what happened.
It's a special ordinance requiring clearing if not a massage parlor, otherwise they'll be a fine.
What do you want it to be? Let's just pick one up.
Hey, uh, do we need to make sure everybody's on the same page about the phone call?
Well, for everybody who doesn't know, there's a guy that called today, said he wanted to know if you- he could bring a gun up here if he had a gun permit.
Yeah, this was no requirement.
So-
What'd you say about that, Officer Dieter?
Huh? I said he started shooting a gun. I got him, I got him.
Let's be aware.
So Cory Bear's gonna- he told the people upstairs if someone comes in and asks about it, and then he's letting them know and he's aware.
After all that junk that just went down with that Congress moment, I stupid guinea B. You ain't watching TV?
It's a lot of strange people.
That ain't strange, right?
That's why we lock the doors behind us. Our emergency action plan is to get up in the air, close the doors, and let their-
If you're cognizant that the game starts at what time, forty? Eight-thirty, so he wants to see-
Is that pregame?
Pregame, everybody wants to see pregame.
I'm not even gonna go home and shovel some snow.
The Ohio State University bucket has made the Oregon Ducks at the Rose Bowl.
Well, it's true, the cleaning ladies.
Yeah, what have you done lately? You just did one of your girls.
So if you say Rita, don't hang up on me like that. Imagine her back in that body.
She asked.
The Monday, January tenth, two thousand eleven, South Bend Common Council is now in session. I'll rise for the invocation by Councilmember and Vice President Oliver Davis.
Before we begin tonight, we would just like to have a moment of silence that we can have meditation or prayer for U.S. Representative Congresswoman Gabrielle Giffords and for all of the other family members who have been injured and those who have died in Tucson, Arizona at this time. And let us pause for a moment of prayer, and then I'll close with our invocation. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for the privilege of being a public servant. We thank you for all of those who serve not only in this city, but around our country and around the world. We ask for a special prayer for all of those who have been injured in the Arizona situation. Lord, continue to guide them, heal them, and restore their health. Bless all those family members who have lost loved ones during this tragedy. Continue to guard them and encourage them spiritually. Bless us here in South Bend as we make decisions for your city, for the best of this community, that we may continue to grow stronger. Bless each one of our leaders here in our area. Protect us all and save us and bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is. Mr. Fordy, read the roll. President Dieter. Present, Mr. Fordy. Henry Davis.
Uh, present.
Mr. LaFountain.
Here.
Mrs. Puzello.
Present.
Dr. Burner.
Present.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Present.
Mr. Kerstitz.
Present.
Councilmember Ross.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
I am present. Thank you. Report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. I have three reports, from the meeting of November thirtieth, from the special meeting of December thirteenth, and the organizational meeting of January third. They all read as follows to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of those respective meetings of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Derek Dieter, David Burner.
I make a motion that we accept the three reports from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Some of the second- Motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, thank you very much. Under special business, if you are here tonight for bills ten-fifty-nine, forty-six-ten, or ten-fifty-seven regarding the Maple Lane rezoning for massage parlor, and so on and so on, that will be continued to January twenty-fourth. Also, special appointments to the Century Center. Greg Downs will be taking the appointment from the council for Randy Kelly. He'll be sworn in this week. Any reports of city offices? Seeing none, can I have a motion resolved, Committee of the whole?
Some move.
On favor? Aye. Committee of the whole is in session. Now, this portion of the council meeting where the- is where the council sets as a committee. Proposed ordinance are read by title only by City Clerk John Fordy. Reports then verbally are verbally given by the chairperson of the council's standing committee, to which the proposed ordinance was sent as an advisory review and recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member of the area plan commission will be given. In other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will be immediately- will immediately follow the committee report, and then the formal presentation followed by a public hearing. Additional rules governing the committee of the whole are set forth in the brochure available there on the stand, available to the public. Mr. Fordy, would you please read Bill eighty-five-ten? Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana appropriating two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars within Fund Two Twelve from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Shelter Plus Care Grant Program. Is there a committee report? Yes, there is. This matter came before the Personnel and Finance Committee this afternoon, and after presentation and public hearing, the committee voted to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Mrs. LaFountain. The- with the presenter, please state her name and address, and then give your presentation.
Pam Meyer, Director of Community Development, with offices in this building on the twelfth floor. The ordinance before you is a renewal of three separate grants. This is applied for by organizations in the community through what's called the continuum of care. It is approved by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the funds then come to the City of South Bend, and we contract with those entities. This historically has been done by Madison Center. Because of the change in Madison Center's certification status, it is now being done by Oaklawn Psychiatric Center. It has been approved by HUD, and we are asking for your approval. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Does anyone have a question of the presenter? Seeing none, hearing none. Is anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill eighty-five-ten? Anyone present wishing to speak against it? Seeing none, hearing none, we're out of the public hearing portion of our session. Is there a motion on eighty-five-ten? Motion for favorable recommendation.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second to send eighty-five-ten to full council with a favorable recommendation. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Do we need a motion for eighty-six-ten? We do? All right. I'd like to make a motion that eighty-six-ten be continued to February fourteenth, two thousand eleven.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second to continue eighty-six-ten to two-fourteen-eleven. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We will also make note at this time is that the committee, Community Economic Development Committee, will have scheduled public hearings. The first one being on January the seventeenth at ten-thirty a.m. in the council informal committee room. It's ten-thirty a.m. next Monday. Martin Luther King's birthday will be at ten-thirty a.m. in the informal committee room. Mr. Fordy, would you please read Bill eighty-seven-ten?
That's not necessary either. A motion to continue to February four-
Some move.
Second. You've heard the motion and the second to continue eighty-seven-ten until February the twenty-eighth, two-eleven. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Fordy, would you please read Bill eighty-eight-ten? Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, mending ordinance number one-zero-zero-four-four-dash-ten, which fixed maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar year two thousand eleven to approve Teamster employee wages for two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. Is there a committee report? Yes, there is. This bill came before the Personnel and Finance Committee this afternoon. After holding a public hearing, the committee voted to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Mrs. LaFountain. Presentor president, please give your name and address.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Greg David Zentera. I am the Controller for the City of South Bend, with offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Ordinance number one-hundred-four-four-dash-one-zero was passed by the South Bend Common Council in its second substitute version on September thirtieth, two thousand ten, during a time when labor wage negotiations were ongoing but not yet concluded between the city and its Teamster employee group. At time of passage of ordinance number one-hundred-four-four-dash-one-zero, city administration had a contractual agreement proposal on the table with the Teamster Union that proposed a zero percent wage rate increase in fiscal two thousand eleven, with subsequent two percent wage rate increases effective January first, two thousand twelve, and January first, two thousand thirteen. As the contractual agreement proposal was not yet ratified by Teamster Union membership, it was determined in joint agreement between the Common Council and city administration that the appropriate Teamster wage ordinance proposed to common council passage on September thirtieth, two thousand ten should exclude any reference to wage years beyond the two thousand eleven zero percent wage increase. It was jointly concluded that upon Teamster contract ratification of the two percent wage rate increases proposed for effect on January first, two thousand twelve, and on January first, two thousand thirteen, that city administration would file an amendment to ordinance number one-hundred-four-four-dash-one-zero that would incorporate the Teamster contract ratified wage rates for these future periods. As such, Bill eighty-eight-ten submitted this evening amends ordinance number one-hundred-four-four-dash-one-zero effectively to include the Teamster wage rates for effect on January first, two thousand twelve, and January first, two thousand thirteen, in accordance with the Teamster contract ratified and binding between the city of South Bend and its Teamster Union employees.
Thank you, Mrs. Zentera. Anyone have a question of the presenter from the council? Any question? Seeing none, hearing none, thank you, sir. Anyone present wishing to speak in favor, the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill eighty-eight-ten? Any public member wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against eighty-eight-ten? Seeing none, hearing none, is there a motion, councilmen?
Is there a favorable recommendation? Second.
Motion is made and promptly second to send eighty-eight-ten to full council with a favorable recommendation. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Fordy, would you please read Bill eighty-nine-ten? Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, mending various sections of Chapter eighteen, Article one of the South Bend Municipal Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks, requiring the removal of snow and ice and amending Section two-dash-two-thirteenth, entitled Schedule of Ordinance and Code Violation. Make a motion here, the substitute version?
Second.
Motion is made and promptly second to hear the substitute version, so in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a presenter present, please? Mayor? Pardon? I'm sorry, you go right ahead.
A joint committee meeting was held between Health, Public Safety, and Community Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Henry Davis regarding this particular bill, Bill- substitute Bill eighty-nine-dash-ten, and we send this bill to the full council with no recommendation.
Thank you, madam, Ms. White, Councilwoman Lady White. Is there a presenter present for this bill?
I'm Ann Puzello, fourth district councilperson, live at twelve forty-seven East LaSalle. And several years ago, I was concerned about the amount of children I saw walking in the street on Eddie's school- on Eddie Street going to Pearlie School. And in the northeast neighborhood also, of which I'm a part, there were a lot of people forced to walk in the street, and some of the streets were very narrow, so there was a lot of danger to their walking. And so I- I brought it up to the CCAC, and there was a lot of discussion of it, and this is- this is where it now comes to. And there already is an ordinance on the books saying that within twenty-four hours, people have to clean their- their sidewalks. It's- it's not very well enforced at all, and there's no fine connected with it. So our purpose is to put some teeth into it and keep a better eye out, and we have the help of Catherine Topol from Code Enforcement, who is in favor and will be the- the one who is chiefly in charge of enforcement.
Thank you, Mrs. Puzello. Just to reiterate some of the things Ann said, actually. I too live in a district- in my district where Adams High School is about four blocks to the east of where I live. Jefferson School's about two blocks to the north. And I get out early in the morning, and I see kids walking to and from school through the streets. So I- I wanted to add myself to this bill just because I have concerns not only as a councilman in the third district, but also as a parent, as to whether those kids are going to be walking in those dark streets, particularly in the wintertime. In addition to this statute having more teeth, another purpose in doing this was to provide a little clarification also. We wanted to make sure that we had a provision which would allow those people who could not get their sidewalks cleared because of age or some sort of disability, an exemption, and that that exemption would be clear, so that they wouldn't fall, I guess, or run afoul of this particular ordinance. So my belief is that it addresses a serious problem. It improves upon the previous ordinance, and that it is actually more of a clarification than the old ordinance. Thank you, Mrs. LaFountain.
Councilmembers, my name is Albany Kerstitz. My involvement comes from the CCAC committee meeting where we had found out at some of our meetings, we had some complaints from some of our resident occupied single-family homes in areas where we have rental properties, primarily to students, where the sidewalks weren't being shovelled. The committee has done a lot of great work and worked together with the city to bring students and property owners and families together. And one thing we found out was it was just a lack of knowledge on- on some of the landlords' part and also the students that live in these properties. So part of that was educating, and from what education about the ordinance, about, you know, the landlords providing shovels, and we found that there was more compliance with shoveling their walks, and at least that's what the residents told us. As we worked with the universities that are on this committee, it was- and I can't really remember who brought it up, if it was Council Attorney Kathy Sikansky- and I can't really remember who brought it up, if it was council attorney Kathy Sikansky-Fairon or one of the students, about quite possibly on the snow ordinance, if it was amended to allow students to somehow get involved to help those who have hardship in our community to shovel their walks. And with research and stuff, we found out that some other communities are doing this. So, it was hoped that, uh, quite possibly through our CCAC committee, meeting, meetings, uh, also with the Board of Public Works and the cities where we can id- identify people that have hardships with volunteers that are willing to do that. Hopefully, if it works with the students, we have a lot of schools, uh, both at the high school level and at the grade school level that have their students, they're required to perform community service hours, uh, Boy Scouts, et cetera. Hopefully, this can grow into a win-win situation where we can create somewhat of a registry to help those people out that need shoveling, uh, some of our older handicap residents. By no means do we want to with this ordinance to become, uh, the snow Nazis to harm people, but we need people's attention. I think there's been better snow shoveling residentially prior to this big storm. I know it's going to take a few days for some people to get their sidewalk shoveled. But again, we can't allow children, neighborhood, uh, schools where children are walking to it to have to walk in the street. That's just wrong and we need to have some kind of enforcement procedure and also a way to help those residents that need help getting their walk shoveled. And I think this ordinance addresses that and that's why we should support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerst. Anyone have a question of the presenters?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Um, couple of questions. I am glad that you have looked into this because like today, I was, like I shared with you earlier, I saw a lot of people walking up Western Avenue. Um, number one, when does the twenty-four hour limit? I know it's already on our books, but re-clarify, when does that twenty-four hour limit begin? Is it the day of the snow, when is the snow stopped or what, what are we looking at, um, to be specific? And so people would know what timeframe are they looking at? Second thing I would like to know, are we dealing, um, with how many inches of snow? Are we looking at, at every single snow storm? Um, uh, one inch, two inch? Are we looking at something that happened this weekend? Uh, what are we looking at so we can be clarified? Cause we live in a region where sometimes we get a couple of inches, that's not bad or, or like we got this weekend, so is there some clarification of those two issues?
Councilmember Davis, Kathleen Sikansky-Fairon, the council attorney who assisted the three council members in drafting this ordinance. Uh, to your first question, the twenty-four hours begins after the cessation of the snow itself. So, when it has stopped, the, uh, individual property owner, both residential and commercial would have twenty-four hours to remove the snow so that the sidewalk is passable.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Davis, it seems to me that, um, uh, uh, it's hard to do that. It's hard to pass a law that names some number of inches, but at least as a start until think we would begin to work things out that need working out, common sense might work pretty well. You can walk through two inches of snow. So, it's not vital, we don't want to ticket people, hurt them for snow that is not a problem in actual fact for people walking. But if, but if six inches falls, then people are either going to have trouble walking or get awfully wet, probably. So, I mean, I, I hope that for a while anyway, we can use common sense as to how much is too much.
Well, the only reason I bring that up is just the issue of consistency because, uh, like we shared earlier, um, even with this last snowstorm, some people, I know where I live over there, I remember which, we got a lot more snow than some other places in the city and it comes in different sections. And so, sometimes you may have a side of the city that would get, um, two inches and somebody another side of the city within, um, gets seven or eight inches within the same city limits of South Bend. And so, and then, um, with Lake of Flex Snow, sometimes it stops at three, sometimes it stops at six, sometimes it stop, you know, it's can be very interesting and we have to deal with the fact that people will be pinpointing some of those kind of things and we don't want to just...
Councilmember Davis, your example is precisely why the five communities that were outlined, uh, during the, uh, joint committee meeting this afternoon have done away with, uh, a specific inch requirement because of the variance. For instance, in South Bend, the airport got so much more snow than other parts of the city, uh, that any kind of snow, uh, could cause a safety hazard. And, uh, Boston, uh, Boulder, Colorado, all, Madison, Wisconsin in particular, all of those have looked at it purely from a s- public safety aspect that whether it's an inch of snow or six inches of snow, they are looking at it for, uh, safety purposes. Uh, as councilmember Puzello noted and as Ms. Topol will be, uh, hopefully stating in a few moments, uh, it's a matter of priorities, that the city already uses a priority system as far as, uh, those areas that are, uh, heavily traffic areas or, uh, heavy pedestrian areas and then also those that are near public buildings like this building, for instance. And those would be the key priorities as opposed to residential areas. Uh, but that same, uh, if this bill would go forward this evening and is passed, it needs to be published in its entirety and there would be a series of public service announcements as well as, as Dr. Varner, uh, requested. Uh, we anticipate that there would also be notices, uh, when the, uh, mayor declares an emergency with regard to snow routes, that there would also be a separate section on this, to remind people of this ordinance with regard to removal within twenty-four hours because that aspect is currently on the books itself. Uh, but again, uh, I can remember, uh, going back to the nineteen-seventies when the council, uh, city council, uh, uh, studied this matter with regard to should we have an inch requirement? And again, uh, many people from the public came forward and it depended on how you, uh, were placing the ruler, whether it was really a three inch or six inch or, or not. So, it, we have learned from the experience and practice of other communities that it's far better to look at it from a public safety aspect itself.
Mr. Dieter?
Yes, thank you. Do we have, uh, again, it's, since Mr. Robbins is an attorney, we're cutting hairs. Does it specify how big of a path that someone has to shovel? Is it a four-inch path? Is it a eighteen-inch?
It says the width of the sidewalk.
Could Cory Berry get down the street?
The, the width of the sidewalk, again, the, depending on what area the city are in, uh, the widths of the sidewalk have changed. Some of the older, uh, sections of the city, older residential areas are smaller as opposed to some of the other, but it would be the width of the side sidewalk. But again, as Ms. Topol, I'm sure, because she will be the chief person with regard to enforcement, the key is ingress and egress so that you can have movement safely of the pedestrians.
Anyone else?
I'll, I'll, I'll adjourn my's until after Ms. Topol, uh, speaks.
Okay, there, there is, there is a question. Go ahead.
Uh, so is, is, is the intent to make sure it's free of snow or passable?
That's a good question.
I, I, why, it, it, the, the, there's going to be enormous questions asked of, of people and, and especially, I'm glad someone asked a question about the width of the sidewalk because, you know, if you got a five-foot wide sidewalk, it happens to be in, in front of your house or has been placed, um, and the city's been known to place five-foot sidewalks in front of some areas. Uh, are they responsible for the five-foot sidewalk or is it? And, and I'm asking this because I know it's going to come up.
That's, that's an excellent question and the way it is written, it is so that the sidewalk is not obstructed for its use.
So, it doesn't mean sidewalk, it doesn't mean width of the sidewalk?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be clear to the base. It has to be clear and not obstructed.
So, we should make that clear because otherwise it's, the, the ordinance does say sidewalk to sidewalk or from edge to edge.
Well, I mean...
The, uh, question, anybody, there is a question. Ms. White, do you have your hand?
No.
Uh, the, the very street that Mrs. Puzello, uh, made mention of has no tree lawn. And I can tell you from experience that it's hard to keep, uh, ahead of the state road, the state highway department when it comes to clearing the sidewalks on Eddie Street. I can tell you from that from experience. And, uh, if you give any consideration to, uh, areas, for instance, Eddie and, uh, this whole state road twenty-three, Eddie Street, South Bend Avenue going northeast, uh, on how you're going to keep that clear, uh, when you have the state, the state highway department is, uh, r- racing up and down that highway?
Okay, uh, I know it's very difficult to clear snow off a street like Eddie with no tree lawn because you have trouble knowing where to put the snow. But personally, I'd like to leave that up to Sam Hensley, the street superintendent, to figure that out.
Could we have Sam figure that out and then come back to us rather than?
Yes.
I mean, rather than pass something and then have?
Oh, no, no, no. He's a very smart man. He'll work it out.
All right, uh, Mr. Dieter?
I think it's like Dr. Ri- like Riverside Drive is a perfect example. There's no tree lawn that, uh, be right up on there, so, again, I think there's just going to be a lot of kinks we're going to have to, to work our way through because, as Mr. Fontaine Attorney, there will be the discrepancy of passable, uh, why, I guess it'll be a work in progress.
All right, anyone else?
And again, um, I would just like to say again, it goes back to, because a lot of times people can clean their sidewalks and when the city comes along and we throw it back on there, it can become a issue of who cleaned it, when did they clean it? And the argument of who's responsible, again, when the city or somebody else puts it back on the sidewalks in front of your house or in front of those, uh, your business. How do you handle those kind of situations? When you cleaned it and it's been pushed back?
Again, that's, that's an issue that is ongoing and I think it would be important for the council to hear how it's currently being addressed.
Good evening. Catherine Topol, Director of Code Enforcement, offices on the thirteenth floor of this building. One important factor that comes to mind as I'm, I'm listening to the questions is this ordinance is already on the books now and has been for many, many years. And with the ordinance, as it states now, we have the exact same problem that you've been speaking of. The sidewalks get cleared and the s- street department comes through and with the plows and it gets covered again. This happens to sidewalks that are cleared by the city too. And we have to continually go back out there and clear them. And yes, we will monitor that if they, if people, uh, Eddie Street is a prime example, that's one of our high-traffic areas. If people are making the attempt to keep the sidewalk passable and the street department comes by the next day because they're trying to go with the curb to curb and it gets covered again, we're, we're out there every day, just like now. We were out there today monitoring the situation, seeing that many sidewalks still needed to be shoveled. We're out there every day. If they've made that attempt, we're going to see that they make the attempt again. It, it's, it's a common sense factor, unfortunately. The ordinance is on the books now. We're trying to tweak it to make it better for one, to allow for exemptions and two, to, to allow us to put a volunteer group in touch with people that may need the assistance. Um, the twenty-four hour period we have, uh, currently, uh, we, we use an internal two-inch rule. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that two inches is always going to be the case. It could be an inch of ice that becomes a public safety hazard, which is the reason to tweak the ordinance. You know, if you have an inch or quarter inch of ice, that needs to be addressed because if people are slipping, sliding and falling, um, clearly there's a hazard for anybody walking down that area. So, we currently handle this by a priority basis and again, we monitor the situation. If they have been shoveled sidewalks once and the street department comes through again, as they will to try to get the streets cleared, we'll monitor the situation to see that they get shoveled again.
Mr. Davis?
I realize that it's been on the books and for, since the seventies, but I, the reason we are asking these questions is we are highlighting it now and planning to put more intention to it. And I think out of fairness to not only the council, but out of fairness to us, our community members, they need to be aware of these particular issues because they're not, they're not as clear to us up here. And so therefore, when they're not as clear as we are, I think the people who will be impacted by us as we all live in the community, um, have to be, uh, made aware of all these issues. That goes back to Dr. Varner's area of, of making sure that people know about it. And so, that's one of the cur- um, issues that I have.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Thank you. Um, I applaud the three, um, for working at something like this. This was something that I had, excuse me, had some reservations about, uh, over the past couple of years dealing with the housing authority and how that that area is being monitored and actually being, um, ma- maintenance, uh, because of heavy snowfall or a little no fo- snowfall because of the city tracks, uh, trucks pushing, uh, snow on the sidewalk and then the housing authority union will come by and take it off the sidewalk and put it back on the street and then it was like people were working against each other. So, I applaud you of, you know, working at a solution for this particular issue. Um, but there are some things that I need to be, that I think that needs to be addressed, um, due to the second district. The second district has a lot of project home facilities as well as seniors that live in the area. And so, when you talk about priority areas, wh- wh- what does priority mean and how's that defined for this particular ordinance?
We are basing the priorities, it's not actually written into the ordinance. The priorities are based on forms that, uh, we had looked at for other communities. We, we base it on pedestrian traffic, bus routes, schooling. Where, where your sidewalks are getting their most use. Clearly, if you have a street that has all vacant lots and there's no reason for anybody to walk down the sidewalk, that's not going to become a priority. Um, some of your, uh, corridor areas have high pedestrian traffic with bus routes. Um, schools have high pedestrian traffic with bus routes. Over the years, our office has compiled lists of those areas, um, where we know to be high-traffic, pedestrian-traffic areas that we consider priority because those are where the areas needed, um, the most attention for pedestrians.
And I'm glad you said it and thank you for that response because the second district should be a high priority area. We have transport and all transport routes. There are one, two, three, four, five, um, schools in the second district and one right outside of it, which is Harrison School. Um, and also the many, many, uh, thoroughfares, what, we have Sample as well as, uh, Lincoln Way as well as Western. And so, when we talk about those things and I'm, I'm being clear, I'm not kicking against it because it's a great idea, but there are things in here that, that, that makes me a bit apprehensive for us voting on this. So, when you talk about priorities and you have these areas that I just named off that are, uh, privy to the second district, does that in fact, do we cite ourselves as a city when these things are not being done? Because we do own a lot of property and I can talk about downtown and how the snow is piled up downtown and downtown areas on the sidewalks. Do we find ourselves?
Obviously, we do not find ourselves. I make phone calls to the departments that are required to get the snow removed, to have the snow removed from where it needs to be removed. For example, across the street, um, where all the trees were planted at the corner of Main and Jefferson, that sidewalk, um, in fact, I have to check it, that sidewalk was missed for the first year that the city acquired it. I had to make the proper phone calls to make certain that it got on the list for the snow to be removed.
Okay, because I'm looking back at the ordinance and the original intent, it was talking about renting homes for student use. It's not, and that's what I'm saying, the spirit of it was for a certain area of the city and not for the aggregate, how I'm reading and how it's being presented. So, that's why I'm asking these questions. Now, excuse me, give me one more second, please. And so, you're talking about vacant areas, vacant houses, abandoned houses. How many vacant homes and abandoned homes do we have in the city? Because those are going to be areas as well that kids are, have to walk through to go to school. And so, do we know what the amount of homes that are vacant and where those homes are at? Because they're going to need a lot of attention.
I can't, I don't know about all the vacant homes if that'll get shoveled there.
Well, Kathy would probably would know.
But what this came from with the students and the University of Notre Dame, a lot of students were totally ignorant of the requirement by the city to shovel their sidewalk. As we informed them and told them about the ordinance, then they realized what it was, working with the landlords to create the awareness, create the awareness of the ordinance that they'll get fined and putting the liability on them. They provided them with snow shovels, so we started to solve the problem. So, it's, it's about creating awareness. Then it came up like, well, perhaps if we and other communities were upgrading it because I'm worried, not, not right about Notre Dame, I'm worried over by Measal School on Vassar Street where kids are walking in the street, walking to Measal School, Harrison, other schools where they shouldn't be in the street to get the owners of the, of the single-family home or if it's a commercial area, they have an obligation to clear that in a high-traffic area, especially if kids are going to be using it. The registry is hopefully to create, uh, students, volunteer groups, wherever they're coming from, universities, uh, grade schools, high schools, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts. Hey, if we can create, we got a need to get some old people's sidewalk shoveled and we got a registry of volunteers that want to do it, now we're solving a problem. It's not going to cure everything, but it's doing the right thing.
No, I, I'm not looking for a cure because we're human beings and we're not going to be a hundred percent correct on this. But I would hate for us to put something like this in effect and then we're going to be citing people in areas that are in these vac- perfect example, Measal School, Allen Street, Blaine Street, Cleveland, uh, a- and I can go on for days, but Saucum Street, all second district, all a lot of vacant abandoned homes over there. Kids still live in those areas. How are we going to manage? We don't know. And that's what I'm saying, it's hard to vote for something when you don't know. I'm not kicking against it, I would like to work with you on it, but we don't know. I can't vote for something I don't, we don't know anything about. It's difficult.
We address that now, we cite those properties, and the city has gone out, every single major snowfall, the city has gone out and cleared the snow and built the residence, we have done that on those high-traffic areas, that is how we've addressed it.
But those areas are not high-traffic, but they're residential, the ones I just named off.
And that's what I'm saying, this is a pri- this is a tool, this is not saying I'm gonna go cite every vacant lot out in the city, I'm not gonna cite every resident in the city, I don't have that ability.
Well, you already have that ability with the ordinance that's on the books.
I don't have the ability by staff.
You just told us earlier today that you have the ability to fine people fifteen dollars from the, from the front cover of the book, add it to the orders that's already in the book, to do this particular job.
What, this ordinance closes a legal loophole that we discovered when we were starting to research this back last spring, um, with Councilmember White. The fifteen dollars is listed in the ordinance violation listing of all the, uh, fines that can be presented. However, when you go to the actual body of the ordinance with regard to requirements for snow removal, it is not listed there. This plugs that hole, so that it's consistent. With regard to the hardship situations, Councilmember Davis, again, all that the ordinance is attempting to do is to create a safety net, which is not there now for any senior citizen, for anyone with a disability at all, we're trying to work, make it a win-win, by creating the safety net for those individuals.
Okay, um, again, I still have my concerns, I'm gonna get off my soapbox, but I really have some concerns about the amount of vacant homes that are in the city of South Bend, and also even getting these, these waivers out, or these, these, uh, forms out to those who would need them, it's the same people that are probably stuck in their home right now, that need their driveway shoveled, that would need them, and so, it's kinda like, how do you transfer the paper over to them so they can fill it out, and get it back downtown, but I digress.
Dr. Vardner?
Henry, if we don't, right now, we have nothing in place, nothing in place for anyone.
Is there any way we can start it in the summer versus right now, while there's snowfall, so we don't-
I think I would start it now, because it is snowing.
Well, I'm trying to work with you on it, so that we can make sure some of these things are being taken care of.
Again, because of the public safety concerns, that's why we started last spring in giving a draft ordinance to the council and the administration. This is a good example, I think, of the administration sending all of their concerns, which have been incorporated into the substitute bill, to give, again, a mechanism, a tool, for us to try to address what has been clearly a safety factor now in a better way. If we don't provide that mechanism and continue to improve upon it, we'll never make any progress in this area.
Dr. Davis Vardner?
Well, I appreciate everyone's efforts, I know they were intended, uh, however, two things struck me, one, Kathy just said that in major snowfalls, the city's gone out and cleared the lots, why would I wanna make my constituents more responsible for clearing the lots, and the city's responsible for clearing their sidewalks, why would I wanna place a burden greater than that? Uh, the second, uh, thing that occurs to me about that, and I'm all in favor of the public awareness aspect of it. But what's a major snowfall? If a major snowfall was when you decide it's a major snowfall, then my constituents are subject to fines, if you happen to decide it's a major snowfall. You're either gonna have to define that, or you're gonna have to have an emergency declared by the mayor's office, which says that i- in the next twenty-four hours, if your lots are not cleared, or your sidewalks are not cleared, there will be fines. Other than that, it becomes just way too arbitrary, however, well-intended, and I, and I appreciate that fact, though. But this is just totally open-ended, as it's proposed, again, however well-intended, and if we can't define this better, it remains that way, open to too much discretion, and I'm gonna get the phone calls, uh, as, as, why am I getting a citation, when in fact, the guy across the street didn't get one, and we know that's happened with car parking, we know that's happened, uh, with, with a number of other instances. I, I just, I, I, if, if, if we can come up with some reasonable definitions that will tell everybody what's really gonna happen, then, then I'm okay with it, but this is just way too arbitrary, in my opinion.
Uh, there is, there is one tool that we have that I'm very hopeful we'll be using, uh, and that is the mayor's public service announcements. Uh, as we had one, I think, for yesterday or Saturday, Saturday was a, an emergency situation, and people weren't to go out. Well, add to that, um, there's enough snow, so we're particularly worried about sidewalk shoveling, and we'll be keeping a close eye on schools, because they'll be open tomorrow, prob- maybe, probably, uh, and hospitals and, and, uh, churches, and, or whatever other thing may be important. I know many of you in the, uh, on the west side, or the south side, or whatever, did not get a whole lot of snow, but the northeast side has, has gotten probably five to seven inches more, and is the si- is the place where we most need to pay attention. You know, there are several kinds of public service announcements that can be made as part of what the mayor says in emergency situations.
Oliver Davis?
Um, could I have a question for the attorney again, um, could you restate, I was, so what we have in place right now, we can't find anybody, is that correct?
Right now, the, the mechanism that the city of South Bend currently has, is when, uh, the city, through Kathy's off, Ca- uh, Ms. Topple's office, goes there and removes the snow, removes the obstruction, and then, uh, charges, and she mentioned at the committee meeting, the joint committee meeting, that it averages about a hundred and nine dollars for that removal.
But I'm talking about, because you said it was not a part of the ordinance.
On the, the only thing we have on the books right now is the listing that your first citation would be fifteen dollars. However, when you go to the guts of the ordinance itself, it, there is no enabling legislation that authorizes that fifteen dollars, it's merely a listing.
So since nineteen seventy, since this was enacted back in nineteen seventy-two, there has not been one person fined and given a fifteen dollars, because it has not been allowed to be, is that correct?
It's my understanding that there have been citations issued, however, if-
They have not been enabling-
If they would've been challenged, they could have been overturned, and we are trying to close that loophole.
That, that, that's, that's a, huh, but that's, that is a good question, when it comes down to that, you know.
Did you hear Dr. Vardner's question? He wanted to know why wasn't it presented as clo- closing the loophole, rather than the way it's being presented, that was his question.
Hey, I mean, it doesn't change my thoughts on it, we still, what's, I think something that was-
Again, that's, that's just one aspect of, you know, there are multiple purposes of this, and one of them is the safety net, one of them is to clarify that it's both the owner, as well as the occupant of the property, whether you're, it's commercial or residential. You know, there are many aspects of it, we're trying to learn from communities that have far more snow than the city of South Bend, learn by their experience, and try to make it better in South Bend, from a public safety aspect.
And, and when they-
Let me get Ms. White, then I'll come back to you, you alright, Mr. Davis, go ahead.
And when they haven't enforced it, how, and, and when they were challenged, was, were those other cities held up, uh, those kinda things? What have they done to make sure there's, where challenges were held up?
Uh, I'm, I'm unaware of any legal challenges, the key was enforcement and implementation. And there's a, uh, forty-five-page, uh, publication, which I'd be glad to give to you, from the city of Boston, and also Madison has a multi-page, I forget how many pages, but they go through it each year to see how they can improve it. And they said unless it's a joint effort of public service announcements, getting voluntary cooperation of the citizens, using citations as a backup, as a lever in the event that you, you can't go forward, and again, what Ms. Topple has also, uh, identified, in those situations that are true emergencies, where people are walking in there, that the city has the responsibility to immediately go in there and remove it, and tag them for the cost, those are the three aspects to get any results.
This would be specifically for snow and not for ice?
It's snow and ice.
Snow and ice.
It's both.
So, okay, interesting, what about hell?
Alright, any other questions of, of these presenters? No one, alright, seeing no other questions of presenters, is anyone present wishing to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of the bill? If you please, if you wanna speak in favor, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mike Coman, C-O-M-A-N, five zero eight East South Street, right over here on the, by the post office. I spent twelve hours this weekend, snowblowing, snow off about three city-block lengths of sidewalks, helping my neighbors out. Which is fine, I was trying to get, help kids get to the bus stop, and what a good neighbor ought to do, right? Got home this evening, and the city replowed the whole city block in front of my house. So I've gotta go back and do that again, which Councilman Davis just mentioned. Now, I'm in favor of this, but I would appreciate if the city would be a little bit more careful where that blade goes, and how fast they go, because tonight, what they plowed over is gonna freeze, and my little snow blower ain't gonna cut the frozen ice in the morning. And I have a four-foot wide sidewalk, so I'm in favor of it, if you got ice on your sidewalks, get them clean, but I've, I took pictures. Cause I'm gonna show them to somebody, but I wish the city would be a little bit more, maybe, soft on that.
Thank you, Mr. Coman.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the, anyone present wishing to speak against it? Seeing none, here is Mrs. Professor Rappel, come and state your name and address.
Rita Coppola, six six five five nine Ivy Road, Lakeville, Indiana, who is always in this wonderful town, and I want you to know that I've had to park early in the morning, clear over by the, uh, post office, that anything that isn't right down on the main street there is walking on, I, even Century Center, and they used to put all the snow right on the sidewalk, you know, d- do you know how much land that the city and the county own together? And, and you're going to take these poor taxpayers, who are just trying to do their thing, and you're going to say, you, 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 and you are gonna pay, and I don't like you, so I know I'm gonna make you pay. And in the meantime, everybody else gets off of it, the trucks go by, and anything anybody clean, because they're going so fast, they cover it right. This is one of those laws that we get, that why bother people, all you do is get people mad at you, it doesn't do a thing for you. You're making a big, if they've had that law since eighteen, whatever, I can see they were smart enough at the time not to bother to try to do anything with it, there are some things that you can't legislate and say, you're gonna pay so much, because I want you to, people are getting taxed to death, and now you wanna fine them to death, because you can't come up with enough taxes. The city and the county have gotta straighten their act up before they can hit all the other people that can't afford to take care of it, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Rappel, anyone else wishing to speak against this bill? Seeing none, hearing none, is there rebuttal?
Kathleen Sikansky, Farron Council Attorney, uh, just in rebuttal, uh, to Ms. Coppola, I think it's important to point out that we also studied the surrounding communities with regard to fines, and the city of South Bend would have the smallest fine if there is a citation, uh, that would be issued. Elkhart is twenty-five dollars, Goshen is twenty-five dollars, and when I spoke with the city of Mishawaka today, their average fine is fifty dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Farron, council member, is there a motion?
Move for favorable adoption of eighty-nine ten.
Second. You've heard a motion, and a second, to send substitute bill eighty-nine ten to full council with a favorable recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?
Nay.
Call the roll, Mr. Lordy.
Mr. Henry Davis? Mr. LaFountain?
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella?
Aye.
Dr. Vardner?
Nay.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Nay.
Mr. Curson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Uh, there are five ayes and four nays.
May you bill go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. He, uh, take a motion to rise from the committee of the-
So move.
Second.
So move.
Full council's round session, Mr. Lordy, third reading of eighty-five ten. Third reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars within Fund Two Twelve from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Shelter Plus Care Grant Program.
Move for the passage of Bill eighty-five dash ten.
Second.
Lordy, roll.
Mr. Henry Davis? Mr. LaFountain?
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella?
Aye.
Dr. Vardner?
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Curson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Dieter? Nine aye. Eighty-nine ten, please.
Uh, move that eighty-eight ten to pass.
Second. Lordy, third reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number one zero zero four four dash ten, which fixed maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar year twenty-eleven, to be approved, to approve Teamster employee wages for twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen.
Move for the passage.
Second.
Mr. LaFountain?
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella?
Aye.
Dr. Vardner? Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Curson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis? President Dieter? Nine aye. Eighty-nine ten. Third reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending various sections of Chapter Eighteen, Article One of the South Bend Municipal Code, entitled Streets and Sidewalks Requiring the Removal of Snow and Ice, and amending Section two dash two thirteen, entitled Schedule of Ordinance and Code Violation.
Motion to amend, as it was intended, hold.
So move. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Now, if we have a motion on the amended version, move that the amended version be passed?
Second.
Lordy. Mrs. Pizzella?
Aye.
Dr. Vardner?
Nay.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Nay.
Mr. Curson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis? Mr. LaFountain?
Aye.
President Dieter? Five ayes. Resolution is eleven for one. Resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as sixty-eight seventy-nine Enterprise Drive, to be an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for GHS Corporation doing business as GHS String.
Thank you, we have a presenter with a short synopsis of this fine project, please.
Yeah, good evening, President Dieter, members of the council, my name is Rich Deal, from Barnes and Thornburg, with offices at one hundred North Michigan Street, here in South Bend. I'm pleased to represent GHS, and to appear before you tonight to share background on the project, and to request your approval of this confirming resolution. Uh, as you know, GHS is one of the world's largest string manufacturers, uh, manufacturing strings for fretted instruments, ranging from, uh, acoustical and electrical guitars to mandolins. Uh, they're proposing to relocate their manufacturing operations from Michigan to Enterprise Drive here in South Bend. Uh, this proposed project involves, uh, an investment of, uh, between six-hundred-and-fifty thousand and a million dollars in new equipment, uh, right off the bat, together with, uh, increase in new employment of between fifteen and twenty jobs in this first phase, representing payroll of about a half a million dollars. Uh, they project ramping up production over the next year, uh, and that will result in approximately doubling the number of employees and payroll. We'd appreciate your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, thank you, sir, any questions? At the end of your presentation?
Thank you.
Alright, anyone like to speak in favor of eleven oh one? Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven oh one? Anyone in opposition? Seeing neither, council.
Move for the adoption of resolution eleven dash zero-one.
Second. Mr. Lordy. Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Cursis.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis. Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Eleven oh two, please. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana commonly known as thirty-eight forty-nine Shower Lux Drive economic revitalization area for purposes of two and eight-year real property tax abatement for SBG Realty LLC. Thank you, committee reporter.
Mr. Dieter, the Community Economic Development Committee met this afternoon and sent, uh, bill eleven oh two to full council favorably.
Thank you, committee member, chairperson Timothy Rouse.
Mr. President, members of the council, uh, thank you for your time today. Uh, I'm Ryan Rans of SGW Realty, uh, S, or SPG Realty, I'm sorry. Uh, offices at five-four-four-zero-one Twenty-Sixth Street. In deference to your time, uh, overview of this project. Um, after, uh, this is to expand a facility. Right now, there's a, I have a tenant currently called Schaefer Gearworks in a hundred thousand square foot building out on, um, Nims Parkway. They are entered a joint venture with a company from Italy that shall acquire, uh, a new facility. This, uh, joint venture required a regional search and to help to attract them to this location. Uh, this tax abatement, along with other incentives, will allow for them to locate in South Bend and expand, expand their presence here. The initial phase of this project will be fifty thousand square foot. Currently, again, they're about a hundred thousand square foot, uh, um, building now, so a fifty thousand square foot building, which could eventually double over time. This is only the first part of a, of the overall project, being a two-point-one million dollar investment in the building, which I'll be leasing to them as a long-term tenant, which will allow for a far greater investment both in the people and in the, uh, personal property that'll go inside of this project. Um, look forward to answering any of your questions. Uh, this will be, again, a fifty thousand square foot, uh, new building, uh, on the campus of Schaefer Gearworks.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any questions? Seeing none, anyone like to speak in favor? Opposition? Seeing none, council, may I have a recommendation, please?
Move the adoption of eleven oh two.
Second. Mr. Lordy. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Cursis.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis. Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner. President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye. Thank you, third reading of one eleven. I mean, first reading. First reading. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article One, Basic Provisions, Section Twenty-one dash zero-one point oh three, non-conforming lots, uses, buildings, structures, or signs to add a new section to provide for certification of legal non-conforming lots, uses, buildings, structures, or signs.
Uh, move that one eleven, go to area plan.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Two eleven. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter twenty-one zoning Article Twelve floodplain regulations in order to make corrections in ordinance number one-zero-zero-three-seven-dash-ten.
Move that bill zero-two-dash-eleven be sent to area plan.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition, three eleven. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at fifty-thirty-two Miami Street, South Bend, Indiana, council manic district five in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move it down, three eleven, go to area plan.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposition, four eleven. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend appropriating sixty thousand dollars from the non-reverting loss recovery fund, number two-twenty-seven, in twenty-eleven for the closure and removal of two underground, underground storage tanks at Century Center and for Frederickson Park remediation.
Move that four eleven be set for, uh, second reading in public hearing and third reading on one-twenty-four and sent to the park department.
Second.
Committee. Committee.
Thank you. And have a second by Dr. Varner, all in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition, thank you. Five eleven. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating nine-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars within Professional Sports Development Fund, number three-seventy-seven.
Move that bill, uh, five eleven be set for second reading, public hearing, and third reading on one-twenty-four and sent to the park department. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposition. We have a motion for bill sixty-eight-ten to go to Z and A for one-twenty-four eleven. Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition, motion for seventy-ten to be continued indefinitely.
Some move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Request to withdraw bill fifty-five-ten?
Motion to strike.
Motion to strike. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And?
And a motion to, um, have a confirmatory resolutions on bill number forty, thirty-eight-dash-ten and forty-eight, thirty-nine-dash-ten involving the corporate tax abatement for, uh, January twenty-fourth.
Some move? All in favor?
Second.
We have a second by Mrs. Pizzella, all in favor? Alright, those in opposition, any new business, any new business before this council?
Sure. Uh, President Dieter, may I?
Yes, you may.
Okay, the nay came in from the sixty thousand foot underground storage tanks. We still have not got any money appropriated to take care of LaSalle Square cause there are many underground storage tanks that's down there from Vindex. And we're still doing other projects and not taking care of that, at least two-point-five million that was supposed to be dedicated to the development of LaSalle Square. That's why I received a nay vote. Um, I'll also have another question, uh, about, uh, this past weekend and the plowing of the streets, uh, we just got done talking about the plowing of the, uh, or actually sidewalk removal. I received well over a hundred phone calls and comments via my, uh, Facebook page as well as my Twitter account about the inconsistencies in the way that this was, uh, the city was handled and plowed. Uh, with, uh, the understanding that there was a record snowfall. There were still many inconsistencies because I drove from one end of the district to the other end of the district. Then I took another route over to the fifth district, left the fifth, fifth district and went over to the fourth district. And there were clear-cut cases of inconsistency on how things were being plowed. And even today, driving over me street, uh, tracks, it was like a ice rink. And I understood that there was a truck today that got stuck on a pair of, uh, tracks. I don't know the location, but I'm gonna probably say it's because of the amount of snow that was still there. Um, I spoke with Mr. July about Kennedy Park, um, yesterday, I think it was, and how the new sewer separation program have gone in and the streets were shortened. There was a daddy in front of a young lady, uh, lady's house that's a resident. And then at the intersections, because of the bump outs, the trucks can't get in and plow the snow like it's, like it's supposed to be plowed. And so these are the issues that the second district are facing. So I'm saying nay for certain reasons and these are the reasons why, because we put ourselves in a bad predicament. And it's really difficult to service or serve people when we are making it hard for ourselves to serve them. Um, a lot of these things need to be looked at. So I asked Mr. July in this conversation, could I ride around with the street department? Because I really don't know what their job is. Uh, I'm not a street department worker and I'm still looking for that phone call. And I would love to, you know, ride around with, you know, a supervisor or a person in the truck just to see what's going on and see how difficult the job may be. I don't know what a firefighter does, you know? So it may be a, a chance for me to experience the hardships of what it takes to plow a particular area or not. And so I just am putting this out there because there are things that need to be taken care of. LaSalle Square for the eleventh year, we're still doing the same thing over again and not doing anything at all. And also with this snow, uh, plowing, you know, this is the problem that happened the first year I was on council. And, um, I was bashed for making comments on the news, but I didn't even make the comments. But now we're back at it and I'm making the comments now. You know, so, you know, here we go.
I would, any other new business?
Well, only one cooks second on that one and that was, um, to see if we could have a, um, uh, snow remover plan be presented towards our next meetings. So we all have a comprehensive plan of how the city does that.
I would be free to request a public works.
So would that be a serious report on the council, uh, uh, agenda? Report from city office?
Yeah, because it would need to know, because like, I mean, Western Avenue and all, I agree with your concerns that different, it's not... I would like to know which, how the city does that, because when you go up one side of the city in Western Avenue today and you go east, it is a difference. And that's why my concern was with the other part of it. Until we get our act together, have a clear understanding of what we're doing as a city. I agree with where, um, Councilman Davis is on that and that's why I would love for us to put that on the agenda.
Well, Portage Prairie was cleared out as well. And I don't know what the population is out there, but I'm sure it's not like it is in the sixth or second district or third or fourth or first.
We can, if you, if, if it's the desire of the council member, schedule, uh, an update for the, through Public Works for the twenty-four, twenty-fourth meeting, if in fact, um, Gary, we can get that scheduled in time, okay? Uh, so Gary's on, has the information there. Uh, it might also be helpful if we, after we do that, for the sake of the public, since everyone can't attend those meetings, we ask for, uh, such a report at the, off, uh, reports to city offices, uh, at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Varner. Thank you.
Likewise, Council President, uh, Dieter, if we could get an update, a serious update in regards to LaSalle Square. This has been an ongoing issue since we expanded, uh, the airport test to include the LaSalle Square. And, uh, we need to, uh, have a clear understanding, what is the status and why we've not been able to move forward. And that probably would come under council member, uh, laws committee.
Well, uh, I have, I have a comment here. Uh, there, there is a neighborhood plan, is there not, for the South Square?
Yes, there was a plan that was made, but it hasn't been executed.
There's a, uh, I think what we need to do is, is probably get with the Community Economic Development Division who, who actually would, uh, activate or utilize that the plan that's already been devised or revised the plan. But, uh, it's not like it's, it's just, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's not like we haven't done anything with that. It was before I was even on the, uh...
We haven't done anything with it.
What I'm saying is, before I became the, uh, chair of the Community Economic Development Committee, there was a neighborhood plan that was devised. And so what I'm saying we need to do is get with the city, uh, Community Economic Department, Division, and, and, and see where that status is. I have a, I have another issue with that. We, we have these, uh, these conversations at this point, which is appropriate for the council to do so, but there's no one other than the, uh, the, the director of Public Works, uh, in, in the council chambers to hear the conversations. So I would strongly recommend to the president to ask that, uh, department directors, they, you know, I got a bill here that says they're doing a wonderful job and we need to give them a raise, but I don't see them. And so I have a problem with, with some of the issues that we're talking about here tonight. Would they need to be in this, in this chambers and hear these, these, uh, issues that we have before us so we can get them resolved?
So, so for your point, so the, you're asking them?
I'm asking them to be present until this body has adjourned to address the issue of, of the city. These, these are, these administrative issues that we need to have in the forefront and not try to catch somebody, uh, Councilman Davis, since he's been on this, on this council, has been, has been very tenacious at talking about, he can't get an answer. And I'm saying if they were here where they ought to be, as far as I'm concerned, he can get an answer real quick. Because they're in the body and hear the complaints of the, of the, of the councils, of the councils, uh, of this body, what I'm saying. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so you're asking that all administrator, straight to the heads come to every council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't have any problems, they know their way up here when they, when they, when there needs to be an appropriation. I'm, I'm saying they need to be here during the regular council business.
Alright, well, we will get a letter out and ask them of that. As far as any other, uh, issues come up, I would encourage the committee chairs to further get questions out and then, uh, come back to the council to answer the information that they gathered during their time of, uh, gathering that information.
Reverend Rouse, if, if you were, uh, of a mind and, and, uh, Mr. Henry Davis were of a mind to put a letter together, I'll take it to the redevelopment commission on behalf of myself and the council, so that they will have a written notice.
I'll certainly, I'll, I'll certainly address that.
I suspected you might, and I'll be glad to take it, so that, uh, you might forward a copy to Marsha Jones also. So she has that, we can, uh, combine, take that, and that'll be one more, uh, notice, so to speak.
I, I thank you, Dr. Varner, we will address it.
Great. Thank you. If there was a floor, anyone who wants to talk to this council this time about anything that we haven't talked about? You have three minutes, leave your name and address for the record. And kids, keep the pop tarts in your seat.
Jim Serzak, fifteen eighteen Pine Top Trace, Mishawaka. I thought we were to have a third reading of the bill to appropriate three-point-two million dollars in option tax money for the Cove. If I'm mistaken, has that been taken, that third reading?
Mr. Serzak, the bill, uh, died in the committee of the hall. There was no motion to get it out of the committee, uh, therefore there was no third reading, so...
Okay, thank you. So, uh, it's dead?
It's dead.
Not dead.
I think that the, I thought that there was a plan to re-introduce it.
The recommendation, uh, I spoke with Mayor Lookie today. The recommendation was that, uh, he would like to have the hearing on that on February fourteenth, that he would have to refile the bill.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
He is requesting, uh, action on, at the February fourteenth meeting. He would have to refile a bill to that effect.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Kathy, just with clarification, will it be received as first reading again, or would it show up?
Yes, it'll go through the same process.
It would have to be a first, a notice of a first reading, okay.
It'll go through the committee.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
My name is Susan Greitman, G-R-E-U-T-M-A-N, one-three-three-nine Pile Avenue. I am here tonight on behalf of the South Bend Urban Chicken Alliance. And with your permission, a local homeschool group has made you some chicken-shaped cookies that they'd like to share with you tonight. Is that acceptable?
Some move?
Well, they got a little hungry.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead. I will, I will go ahead and speak to you, as long as you won't be too distracted eating while they are passing them up to you. Um, as I said, I am representing the South Bend Urban Chicken Alliance. Please feel free to look us up on Facebook. Um, I also will give the clerks the contact information with our email if you'd like to contact us. Each of you should have received a booklet in the mail that looks a lot like this about a week ago, so you had a chance to look over it. I will also give a copy to the clerk in case you have misplaced it or need another one. Um, please take the time to look over this. When we spoke to you last, you had several questions you addressed to us and we tried to clearly and concisely address all those questions as best as possible in this booklet.
Thank you.
I'm not done yet, I'm just gonna, don't want you to be too distracted. Um, also tonight, I will be presenting to the clerk letters of support that we have received from the local community, including organizations like Grace Community Church, the Urban Garden, Garden Market, Monroe Park Community Association, the Community Gardens of Michiana, the Purpleport Co-op, and the Howard Park Neighborhood Association, along with others. I also have for you tonight a petition of hundreds and hundreds of signatures, some people around the city who are in support of keeping urban chickens. Now, please keep in mind, council, that these people are in support of chickens. They don't necessarily want them themselves, but they feel that the ordinance should be changed. Um, as you can see, it's really obvious that we've had support from so many outlets. We've been on the local news, we've been in the South Bend Tribune so many times. We have so many organizations behind us, as well as a large percentage of the population. Um, we will be writing a draft to change this. We are hoping to have it submitted by the January nineteenth deadline, so you have a chance to look at, over this. Please carefully read the information we have given you, carefully read this draft, and just do your own research if you need to, because this is a very important i- issue. The citizens really want urban chickens and we really feel this is the future of South Bend.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you for the cookies. They're very good.
Good evening, my name is Tony Hannah, I reside at thirteen oh six Lincoln Way East in South Bend, Indiana. I am here tonight to wish the common council a happy new year, President Dieter, as well as, um, Mrs. White, Pastor Rouse, Mr. Cursis, Mr. Oliver Davis, Mr. Varner, as well as Mrs. Mister Oliver Davis, Mister Varner, as well as Mrs. Fazella, Mister Henry Davis, and Mister LaFountain. I am here because of a recent, um, act of violence at the Walgreens Drugstore on Lincoln Way East. I live less than a mile from there. Um, I saw the crime that was committed, a rape in the restroom on television. I prayed about it immediately, because, um, I'm from Chicago and my family has suffered a lot of violent acts. Um, when I found out that it was a resident of the Wooden Indian Motel, um, the hairs on the back of my neck stood up because when Officer Nick Palazzato was killed and Officer Norby was wounded at that motel, it stood out in my mind for some reason, and I recently, six months ago, moved less than a mile from the motel. I am an avid jogger, and I jog and I walk my dog past that location every day during, when the weather's presentable. There are children there during the summer months. It is for transient people. I know it has a history of drugs and prostitution. Most motels do. My concern for the council this evening is based on the fact that, um, we are having people, South Bend is overrun by homeless people from other parts of the state of Indiana, other counties. The most recent offense was by Mister Kemp. He's from Miami County. Um, my, what I wanna know is, what alternatives are there? Meaning, a judge can court order, uh, inmates and people coming from institutions to be mandated, court mandated to a halfway house. Do we have halfway houses in the City of South Bend? If we do not, is it possible that funding can be provided? Because the Wooden Indian Motel is just a microcosm. It's like a volcano. You never know when a volcano is gonna erupt. We, I don't wanna turn the TV on. I have friends that have died in the line of duty. I, I don't want my children to, to be afraid to walk around Walgreens. Um, what I would like to do, what I'm asking is, what can we do to address transients that are being released from IDOC and people that are being released from mental health facilities that are transient? Meaning, is there a way we can institute legislation, file a motion, or get an injunction where a, a judge can possibly court order people that don't have a residence to be put in a position?
In thirty seconds.
Yes, sir, where they can be monitored. The reason why I'm asking is because this gentleman, Mister Kemp, was due to start treatment in forty-eight hours. He couldn't make it forty-eight hours because maybe he didn't want to, but the thing is, real quick, what can we do? Is there something we can do, President Dieter?
Is that, is that the end of your comments?
Yes, sir.
So I'll, after the meeting's over, I will talk.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this council?
Carol Davis. My address is sixteen thirty-one Lincoln Way East. I know the reputation of Wooden Indian. They now have cameras because of that. Uh, Kemp was released as a mistake of, uh, Department of Corrections, and thank God I refused to take him on a run the day before he did what he did, 'cause I could have been the one. Not everybody at the Wooden Indian is transient. And in fact, I used to walk a good bit of, uh, the area in River Park, delivering papers at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning. I had sub droughts. And Tom LaFountain, I used to sub his paper. His territory, his neighborhood can be as violent as the Wooden Indian or anyplace else. We just moved back to the Wooden Indian from Princess Apartments in Mishawaka, because, A, we couldn't sleep. Why? Because of drugs, fights almost every night. It's ridiculous. I don't care what neighborhood, what community, it's ridiculous. Neighborhoods let crime happen because they don't wanna speak out. It's like voting. You vote, come to the council meetings, you see a crime, report it. And just don't report it. If it requires you to go to court, do so. I knew Nick. I knew Scott, and I had talked to him within twenty-four hours of either one getting killed. I don't wanna see another police officer, nor another fireman hurting the line of duty. Contrary to popular belief, I do have family that are on both departments, not necessarily South Bend.
Thirty seconds.
So any more questions, any of you can ask me.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to talk to this council this time? Seeing none? We are adjourned.